Okay. I was joking earlier that I should run up there and sit in my old seat on the end. It's nice to be in the building without sitting in that seat. No. First of all, thank you all for running. I know it's difficult at times and rewarding, so I appreciate all of your time involved in putting yourself out there. So my two minutes is to just encourage you to become an informed voter, so I guess I can leave because you're here. So I think you're probably going to be an informed voter, so what I thought I would do is just kind of challenge you to think about your network of friends and your people that you can influence and just make sure that they know where to go. Like where can they get information? You know, maybe they haven't voted before, and we don't want them to feel like they're being judged because they, you know, haven't had that experience or they aren't even registered. So I'm just here to challenge you. You know, instead of saying, "Be sure to vote," you know, ask them if they know where to go vote, ask them if they know where to get information. So that's kind of my purpose here today, and I wanted to also encourage you to think about your college students. I know we moved to Dallas about a year ago, empty nesters, and so the first thing we did, register to vote. We got our college student registered for the absentee ballot, you know. Just think about those kind of things because it gets a pattern in place for them, so that becomes something that's automatic, you know, when you think about when you're moving. So we've moved back to Flower Mound now. Couldn't stay away. We love it here so much with LISD. So still involved in the community in different ways, and so I just thank you guys for the PTA and everything that you do for the students and for the administration and the current school board. And again, don't just assume that the people you run into are going to go vote. Don't assume they know where to vote, and don't assume that they even know what website to go to or what periodical or what, you know, media outlet to get information about the candidates. So enjoy the evening. Good luck, all of you, answering the questions, and thanks for being supportive of our school district.
Okay. So now to introduce the moderator for tonight's event. She is currently serving as the Communications Chair for the Louisville Council of PTAs. She has served on numerous committees within the district and even piloted the Rising Stars Academy for Louisville Council of PTAs, which has received accommodations from both Texas and national PTA leadership. She has a sincere interest in education and in the Louisville School District, attending every LISD Board of Trustees meeting and workshop. She's a former news reporter for the Sioux City Journal in Sioux City, Iowa, where she covered the education beat. I am proud to introduce the one and only Julie Cluthy.
Thank you, Lauren. That introduction was far more extensive than the one I sent you. All right. What button am I pressing here? Go. Oh, okay. Wait. Is that or not? I'm not very tech savvy, obviously. All right. Just a few preliminaries. Photos and video are being taken and will be posted within the next several days. If you want to be sure you're not pictured, please flag down the photographer. Micah Telemann is a Flower Mound High School senior, and also you might not want to be sitting. Thank you. PTA's mission is up on the screen. Of course, it's all about the kids, and we encourage family engagement in their children's education. We are in large part an advocacy organization, but we do not endorse any candidate, and we do encourage you to vote. All right, about the forum here. Questions were solicited in advance of the meeting. Some of the questions were submitted, and some are mine. I've made every effort to ensure that all questions are fair and factual. Any errors are mine. All candidates will answer all questions. Place one candidates, and then place two candidates, or vice versa, will alternate. Candidates, please keep track of whose turn it is to begin within each place. Opening and closing statements will be two minutes, and the questions will be one minute for your response. Foster Young here is our timekeeper. He will give you a yellow card when you get down to 10 seconds and a red card when your time is up. We won't kick you out of the game, though. All right. With that, we'll begin with opening statements. Place one.
Good evening. Thank you so much for being here tonight. My name is Kranda Timish, and I'm the current Vice President for the LISD School Board, and I'm running for reelection. Three years ago when I ran, I promised that I would roll up my sleeves and I would work hard to get things done in our district and our community, and I feel like I've followed through on that commitment in a couple of key ways. If you remember, in 2015, one of the issues that was important to me was creating a facilities document that allowed our district to have planning of all of the different facilities that we had, so that we knew exactly where each building was and its maintenance, and when did we need to refurbish those, when did they need to have a refresh. And so our administration and our staff has done a fabulous job. We've got an incredible document that lets us plan. We know where we are and where we need to be. I've also continued to advocate for community engagement for our students in our districts and schools. My experience as a parent with four kids in LISD, a business owner, someone who's been in the public school system since I graduated from high school in 1986 in the state of Texas, continues to bring a depth of experience that is going to be needed as we move forward in the coming years as a recapture district for LISD. I have the experience, I have the knowledge, and I have the dedication to do the job and make the decisions that are going to be impacting almost 53,000 students in our district and 6,000 teachers and staff and countless parents that are also impacted with the decisions we make. So again, my name is Kranda Timish, and I'm running for reelection.
I'm going to sit. My name is Sandra Weinstein, and I'm running for place one. I ran last year, and last year when I ran, there's no doubt about it, I ran on pure passion because of the way I felt the government was approaching public education. I'm very, very passionate about public education. This year, I'm running because of some of the unique challenges that our district is facing. One of those unique challenges is a drop in enrollment that is causing a deficit in our budget. But this drop in enrollment is in an area that's growing, and our charter schools are growing. The charter school in Flower Mound is actually applied to move out because they've got a waitlist. We have a great school system. This is why I moved here. The message isn't out. It needs to be marketed, and people need to know what Flower Mound or what Louisville ISD is about and just how great it is, because I think if they did, they would not go to a charter school. The other reason I'm running is I do have some -- I'll tell you a little bit about my background. I was a junior achievement teacher for many, many years. That got me into schools all across the country, rural schools, urban schools, parochial schools. So I got to see what worked and what didn't work, and I got to experience that thrill of making a business principle relevant to a child so that he could understand it and apply it in his life and see how it works. I think that every child deserves that aha moment and that great education that public education brings. I serve on the Louisville Improvement, District of Improvement, and I'm also enrolled in the Inside Louisville ISD. I work on various memberships not related to the school board, and I'll wrap it up there. Thank you. My name is Sandra Weinstein. I'm running for place one.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is David Hernandez, and I'm running for the Louisville Independent School District School Board of Trustees, place two. I have attended pre-K, I have attended schools in LISD since kindergarten all the way till 12th grade. This June, I will be graduating with distinguished honors from Louisville High School. I have been a part of Dr. Rogers Advisory Board, Student Advisory Board, which is made out of students from all five high schools, and they meet once a month. I have served on my local community's Youth Action Council, where I represent my local community's youth. The reason I'm running is simple. For the last four years of my life, I have been able to say I represent more than myself, more than my friends. I represent students and student government, and it has only grown from there. I currently represent 4,500 students at Louisville High School. But next year, I want to be able to say I represent more than them. I want to represent all of LISD, not just the students, but the parents, including those of you sitting here, even those people who may not be sitting here, who I may never meet in my lifetime. But I want to be able to say that I represent all 127 square miles of LISD and am able to bring their thoughts and inputs with mine to the board. I am not only a product of public education, I am a product of Louisville's public education, and I have great love for this district, for if it wasn't for this school district and my parents, I wouldn't be standing in front of you today. Again, my name is David Hernandez, and I'm running for the LISD School Board, position two. Thank you.
My name is Allison Lasson, and I'm running for place two. Thank you all for being here tonight. I know there's a lot of things you could choose to do with your time, and it's really awesome to see almost every seat filled, so thank you for being here. So my husband and I have lived in LISD for about 20 years now. We live in Highland Village. I have two boys in the school system, one at Heritage and one at Bar Hill Middle School. I am a native Texan. I grew up in Tyler, and I'm a product of public education, all the way from kindergarten all the way through high school. Then I made my way down to College Station, where I graduated from Texas A&amp;M. Thank you. I knew there had to be one in the audience somewhere. And then a short time later, I got my master's degree in Geographic Information Systems from UT Dallas. So why am I here? You know, that's one of the favorite questions for candidates is, "Why are you running?" Well, for me, I ran two years ago, and after that race, I realized that I really liked this stuff. I was really passionate about it. It was really interesting to me. So since then, I have served on several different district-level committees. Last year, I served on the Facilities Advisory Committee. It was a big committee, but we made the decisions for what went on the bond package for last year that was passed. This year, I'm serving on the District Leadership Team, which is a more overall committee. And then I also serve on the Community Bond Committee, and we meet with Dr. Rogers about every six weeks or so and kind of get an update on what's going on with the bond package. So I want you all to know that I am here as a good community member. I want to listen to your thoughts. I'm ready to make some tough decisions because they are coming. I think you all know, sorry, okay. Anyway, Allison Lasson. I was getting carried away there. I'm Allison Lasson, running for place two. Thank you.
Thank you for having this forum tonight. My name is Denise Rehman Schneider, and I'm running for place two on the Louisville ISD Board of Trustees. I have lived in Texas for almost 20 years, but I'm originally from Indiana. I'm a wife, mother, and volunteer in our community. I spent 12 years in the corporate world, working for a national home builder. When my son was born, I made the decision to change my focus to being a full-time mom and serving my church and community. I am grateful. I am blessed with the opportunity to do this. Of course, we had to sacrifice to be able to live on one income, but it has been so worth the sacrifice to be so closely involved in raising my children. In 2010, my husband and I moved to Flower Mound because of the excellent schools and the great family community. I have two children at Old Settlers Elementary, and they are the reason I am running for a place on the board. From volunteering in their classes to working with the PTA, I enjoy making an impact in their education. Earlier this year, I felt led to pursue a board position. This journey is showing me some great ways to serve our children and our community. I am ready, willing, and able to thoughtfully make decisions that always puts the students first. I believe I will be an asset to an already great team. My name is Denise Rehman Schneider, and I'm running for place two on the Board of Trustees.
For our first question, we'll start with place one. Are you a PTA member? If so, where and for how long?
Well, yes, I am a PTA member. I started out when my son, when Castle Hills opened. I had two children that started at Castle Hills Elementary. I have been a PTA member. My son has now graduated from college, so I can start doing the math there, but well over a decade and a half. I've been in the environmental chair because that was a fit with my business at Castle Hills Elementary, went on to be at Killian, PTA mom there, involved in the PTA. And then at Hebron High School, I am also and have been, when my youngest graduates, I will have been a Hebron PTA mom for 12 years. So, and that's just at Hebron High School. Apologies, Mr. Finch. And so currently, I'm the Programs Chair, and we, my husband and I and my kids are also, have been members of PTA because we love what PTA does, we appreciate what you do in our community, and will always be a lifelong member. Thank you.
Well, I've been a PTA member for years, but not here in Texas. In fact, I held leadership roles in my last school district, more around the graduation committees and that sort of thing. So I have been a PTA member over at Flower Mound High School for the last two years. This year, I plan, I did not get around to signing up. I missed PTA signup day, but I'm going to sign up for one of the schools that needs to meet their quota so that they can earn their certification.
I am not a PTA member, but I am a student of LISD. However, I was a member this year and last year of PTSA, which is Parent Teacher Student Association. Same thing?
It is.
Okay, then, I was a member, never mind. For two years. I served on the PTSA for Louisville's Board, meaning that I, along with a couple of other students and the principals of all three campuses, gathered, I believe it was once a month, and we would talk about what was going on in each school, and we just went from there. On a personal note, I just wanted to thank all PTA members for what you do, especially at the lower grades. When I was in elementary, I always loved seeing the parents being involved, taking the initiative to be at the schools and showing their kids how much they love them, but also that they had an interest in their education. So thank you.
So yes, I am a PTA member. I actually have been a PTA member since before my kid was in school. I was in the Greater Louisville Early Childhood PTA, and I did membership, and I was actually the president of that club. And so, well, not really. It's not, you know what I mean. And so I've been on the Flower Mound Elementary PTA. I've been on, I'm currently on the Heritage PTA and the Bar Hill PTA. I always end up on those boards. I always raise my hand. And then I also served with you guys last year as the Founder's Day Chair on the Council of PTAs. So, yeah, long time.
Yes, I am a PTA member, and I have been one for four years, since that's when my son started kindergarten. And that's when the world opened up to me about being the PTA from the parent's perspective. I remember my mom going to PTA meetings when I was young. I currently with them, I don't hold an officer position, but I'm responsible for a few things, simple things, but I bring the teachers a birthday cake every month if their birthday falls in that month. And then next year, I'm going to be the legislative liaison. That's what I do for the PTA.
We'll start with place two. Texas PTA asks us to back the future of every child. How do you back the future of all students?
Currently, I'm a leader in my student council, as I said in high school. So I set the example. This weekend, as you may or may not know, Louisville High School's prom is this weekend. So this week, we have stressed the importance of making sure that you are safe, that you have a ride home. We stress that, don't go to parties, don't drink, don't ruin your life in this one night. You have the rest of your adult life to party all you want, but right now, you're -- There's a time to play and a time to work. But right now, you're still young, you're still growing. Don't ruin your life on this one night by making a dumb mistake you'll regret. Go have fun at prom, go back home, see your parents, and then just go on with your life from there. And we keep, I along with my fellow officers, stress that message this whole week for prom. Thank you.
Crack me up there a little bit. How do I back the future of all students? Well, I think that, you know, being involved in PTA, you know, we raise a lot of money for things. One of the things that I like to do, I have recently started serving a little bit over at Hedrick Elementary, and we help out those teachers because their PTA is not quite as big as mine, who we are fortunate to have volunteers tripping over each other to help out. So I like to help out where more help is needed. And so those students are very important, too, and we just kind of back them up and help the teachers out over there.
Well, I think our school district, well, I know our school district does an amazing job with preparing our students for what's next. And I think, and I've heard, you know, this has come up a few times, but it starts from the preschool level. So I think if you're going to back the future, you're going to start before they get into our school system, elementary school system. And you to work with them from a younger age, continue to work with them in elementary school, prepare them, prepare them for what's next, prepare them for college or a trade post-college or post-high school.
So I mentioned that I was a member of JA, and I actually still support it financially, Junior Achievement, where we go into the schools in all districts and try to teach them business principles. I'm also one of the coordinators at AT&amp;T for Bring Your Child to Work Day, where we pull together a variety of activities, like how to build an app and other things to kind of get them engaged in the STEM and the STEM ideas. I'm a member of an advocacy group called Ideal. They recently changed their name to Ability. They, we advocate, or rather help, parents understand or get, support them when they have children that have special needs and emotional issues. And I think, you know, to a certain, end of last year, I went down with the PTA to Austin to advocate for our schools to fight vouchers. So I think that's how I back the future.
Backing the future for each one of our almost 53,000 students is important, and that's a difficult question, because each one of our students comes every day with unique needs that we need to understand, and we work hard to meet. I'm involved as an ambassador for Children's Advocacy Center, which is a great need in our community, if you're not familiar with that. It's a place where students or young children have been involved in some sort of trauma, and it allows for counselors and the police can work together to support them. I'm also a mentor for communities and schools of North Texas. I've had the wonderful privilege of starting this year at Hedrick Elementary, getting to mentor a wonderful fourth-grade young lady. I've also been able to mentor students at Peters Colony and Rockbook Elementary. Being involved with our students is also involved in their needs through my church and our outreach with our community that we have, as well as supporting Love Packs that we have that provides lunches and meals for students who might go without on weekends or during the summer. So thank you.
Moving on to LISD Strategic Design, as summarized on the wall behind you. What does real innovation and limitless opportunity mean to you? Starting with place one.
Okay. Well, real innovation and limitless opportunity, I think LISD really does represent that. They just opened up the Firefighter Academy, and one of the reasons they did that was because there's been identified a shortage of firefighters. So how great is that, that we're developing firefighters, people that are firefighters now, to meet a need in the future? The different academies, the STEM Academy, the Collegiate Academy, those, to me, are innovative ways that we're engaging students, the career centers. Louisville does so much to realize limitless opportunity. The next step, I think, is looking to the future, not just on the STEM programs and that kind of thing, but also caring for our mental and emotional health. I think there's room for innovation there. We have an awesome counseling department. They can't do everything, but I think we can be identifying children from age kindergarten on up, bringing in a program like Just Say Hello to get them engaged and get them, create a culture of inclusion. And then I'm also a proponent of a mental health coordinator that can, that where children of needs are met, I'll stop here. Thank you.
I feel like Dr. Rogers and our leadership team has done a great job of working on innovation that meets the needs of our students, because each student learns differently, and there's different needs. For our technology, we just had a committee that went through and reviewed for our bond package. As we're updating our iPads, we looked at all the different technology at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. We engaged our students, had them work on different types of iPads as well as computers, so that we had an understanding of how do you learn, how do you want to learn, what is the future? Because we know that for our students that are in kindergarten, 65% of those kids, when they graduate, will be looking at jobs that have not yet been created. And so for LISD as a continuous learning organization, we are always learning with our students. Our teachers do an amazing job of looking at the opportunities that the kids need to have to grow and to look at their bits. Limitless opportunities means we're looking at ways that we can create the very best for each student individually. Thank you.
So real innovation, to me, I think LISD does a pretty good job of this, looking at ways to be different, looking at ways to do things better. I hear that all the time in a lot of the board meetings that I attend. They are constantly looking for ways to do things better. They're also listening to ideas that other people have. A lot of times, I'll hear questions from the community, like, "Well, what are they doing about this thing?" Well, I go to a meeting, and they've already kind of solved it, or they're addressing it. Limitless opportunity, to me, that is just everyone. I mean, we have kids, you know, from special ed all the way to gifted and talented, and I believe that's making sure that each one of those kids gets the best education possible, and we get them where they are and where they need to be.
Real innovation and limitless opportunity. I think that means, for me, for our school district, that the opportunity that is available to LISD students is limitless. Again, from the time they start in a pre-K STEM program to the time that they graduate from high school, I think the opportunity is vast in our school district. Our career centers, the ones that are opening, they'll have the ability to leave high school with such a marketable skill, whether they're going to college or whether they're just, they're not going to college. The opportunity is there for them to be able to graduate from high school and start working, whether that's a culinary chef or a firefighter or some other trade.
For me, real innovation and limitless opportunity means that no matter how great a district is or how great something is, we're not satisfied with that. We're not satisfied with the status quo. We want to go above it. If we can get 100, why not 110? And like everyone on this panel has said so far, many students don't always want to go to college right after high school, and that's okay. That's 100% okay. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend coffee with Dr. Rogers's meetings, and he said the same thing. He said many students don't feel that academics, it's their future, and that's perfectly okay. There's always other options. LISD offers the firefighting course, culinary courses. They also offer, I believe, AutoTech Mechanic, which I know many of my friends like, because academics is not their cup of tea. Thank you.
Starting with place two. How will you balance real innovation and limitless opportunity with financial realities?
I'll gladly give my place away to someone else if they want to start with that question. How will I balance real innovation with limitless opportunity with financial realities? Wow, that is a really tough question. I wish I could say that we had all the money in the world to do that, but honestly, those are just some really tough decisions that our Board of Trustees, working with Dr. Rogers, have to make. So I think the most important thing to remember is what benefits the students? What benefits the child? That's the most important thing. So-- important thing. So I think that has to be the focus first.
That's a great question. The role of a trustee, in my opinion, is that the community trusts them to make these types of decisions. The way I would do it would see, at this point in time, what will benefit the students the most? Is it having the firefighting program? Is it having more avid programs? What does, what can benefit the students now? But it's not something that we decide now, and it's the same for always. It's something we should always look, look back at, whether it's every six months, every year, every other year, and decide for that year, what is most beneficial to those students? Because every student is different, and that's also true for year to year. Thank you.
So, as some of you may know, next fiscal year, we're going to send at least $30 million back down to the state due to recapture. We are, they are projecting, over the next three years, pretty significant budget deficits that get greater every year. So this is going to be difficult. One of the things that is, I believe, about to be instituted is a community budget committee. So I was reminded at another forum earlier in the week, I used to work for the town of Flower Mound for about five years, and we had, we had citizen budget partners, and that's exactly what it was. So as a staff, we came up with things that we wanted. They called them decision packages. And so, and they literally chose. And so I believe that's what we're going to have to do. We're going to have to make some tough choices coming up. It's going to be hard. It's really going to be hard, but I'm ready to make those decisions.
Currently LISD is working on two things to answer that question. Ms. LaSalle is right. We are putting together a community committee group of stakeholders across all 13 of our communities, which includes 127 square miles, because we need to know what our community values. There are things that we're going to have to look at to tighten our belt and possibly take off the table for our students, and we want to make sure that our community has input in those decisions. And so if that's something that you're interested in, please let Dr. Rogers or staff know, because that's something that we want everybody's input on. The second is, we actually do rotate all of our programs, our GT programs, our special ed programs, our ABAID, all of our programs. We review them every three, four, five years. They're on a schedule, because we know that it works now, but we want to make sure, is it going to work for our students in four or five years? Are we getting the same results? And so we do, nothing stays stagnant. We're always reviewing, monitoring, collecting data, so that we're doing what's best for each and every one of our students.
So we can talk about cutting, making cuts, and that seems like the obvious place to go, and you have a budget deficit. But the budget deficit is being driven, the one that's 4.6 million going up to 44 million, is being driven by a drop in attendance, which I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation. The innovative thing that LISD can do is start marketing. That is so foreign to public school. But there are so many, but if people really knew and understood just how great our story was, and I have 30 years of marketing, so this is something that I've had to deal with, telling that story in a way that the customer can consume it, telling them where they are and when they're ready to consume it, and the manner in which they can consume it. As an example, I was at the Flower Mound, Keep Flower Mound Beautiful. There was a private school mom. She's talking to me. She doesn't know anything about LISD, and right next to us is a booth for charter school. LISD, that would have been a great opportunity for us to be there and promote our story. Thank you.
Starting with place one, and I guess you're up again, Ms. Weinstein.
Oh.
How would you find a balance between innovating within the district and pursuing equity among campuses?
I need to think about that for a second. Well, to me, pursuing equity among the campuses, it's a matter of, it's a matter of need. It's a matter of, it's a matter of need. The balance between innovating, meaning like where we would put the next career center, where we might put the next, the next program, I guess you would have to take a look at where the need is across the, across the district, or where the space is, or how you do that. Thank you.
One of the ways that I think LISD created an answer for that, that I really appreciate, is that Dr. Rogers changed our zone leaders, where they were in feeder patterns, so that now Andy Plunkett, Rhonda Godby, Lori Litchfield, and Leanne Lewis are now in a horizontal. So Andy Plunkett's over all of our high schools. He's going to all five high schools to making, to make sure that what's working at well at one campus. Are we implementing those across all five high schools? And then we've got Leanne Lewis that's going to all of our middle schools. And then we have two, Lori and Rhonda Godby, that are looking at our elementary schools, because we know when you've got 69 different campuses, that things can get rolled out and done differently. We want to make sure that we're monitoring and creating equity among all of our campuses. And I really feel like that was a significant way to make sure that we have equity and consistency across the district with the education of all of our students.
For me, it would have to be on the school's needs and what resources we have currently available that we can give these schools. But it also has to be in the long run, if we put this program at this school, would it be able to reach the most amount of students that it possibly can? But we also have to keep in mind, whether it may not be this year, how long until we can offer it to all the students? Because it's always unfair to always only have this program. For example, let's say the firefighting program, if it would be in a East Zone school, maybe the West Zone school wouldn't be able to have it. So it's always on the accessibility of the program we have to keep in mind. Thank you.
So, as you probably know, they're rolling out STEM academies now, so next year Donald is getting one. There she is back there. So I know now, because one of my, our elementary school is kind of a finalist, I guess, so to speak, is they're deciding which campus it would be a better fit. And I think, and that is a big decision, because not only, like, we as parents have been involved in that, or learning about it, the teachers are going to have an opinion, the administrators. So it's a big, you know, we need to be innovative, but we also need to be smart about it. Put it where it's wanted and needed the most. And so I hope that we will keep rolling out different types of academies, even more of like an art, music type academy, not just focus on STEM, so.
I don't think, I don't think that we really have to choose between the two. I understand the need for some of the pilot programs and some of the academies, but honestly, if they are that good of a program, such as STEM or the Firefighter Academy, we will find a way to make that available to all the students in all the schools.
Starting with place two. What are your qualifications to provide oversight of a budget with revenues and expenditures of more than $600 million? Ms. LaSalle?
Oh, me? Oh, I get that one. Thanks. Thank you. So first of all, I think I would become best friends with Mr. Ball back there, and, you know, and learn everything I needed to. But as of my own experience, I worked, as I said before, I worked for the town of Flower Mound for five years, and the city of Capel for two years. And so, you know, it's very budget-driven. And so you, as a staff member, you really do learn a lot about budgets, and about where it comes from, and why, and all that kind of stuff. And it's real similar to the school district. They're both local government entities. So, but I think honestly, just a lot of learning, 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 listening, and trying to make the best decisions. Thank you.
Okay. My qualifications, honestly, I don't know if anything that I have done in my past would premiere me for a $600 million budget. I wish, I wish my budgets were that great. But I've done some accounting work in my life, and on a different level. But I do feel comfortable that I would be able to make the decisions, not so much what I've done in my past, but really how my husband and I run our house. So we are, and again, we're different circumstances, but we're debt-free. So we operate our finances on a different way. And I think when you come into a budget, no matter what it is, if you can objectively set aside your revenue and your expenses, I think that you can make really good, good decisions for the school district.
For me, my skills may not be well-suited for this aspect of a trustee. However, how many of you have ever heard Team of Eight? That's why we have seven board members and a superintendent. They work together as a group, as a team. No one person has power over the other. They're equal on the board. And this is where I would offer other experiences, such as the student insight. On this, I would get close to Mr. Ball, ask him any questions that I would understand. And like I said before, the administration at each work session always gives each trustee a packet 10 days before each meeting. And then it's the trustee's job to make sure they get up to speed and informed, and ask any questions that they are not clear on. And that's what I plan to do, and make sure that I am the best informed before each meeting. Thank you.
As a school board member for the last three years, I have been providing oversight for LISD's almost $600 million budget. I've been involved in work sessions, workshops, and all board meetings that include the discussions that we have. And I've been involved in also continuing education as a district, because the Texas finance system is difficult, and there's a lot of moving parts. And I've continued to make sure that I'm growing and learning what it takes, and all the pieces that come in with school finance. So I feel like I've already gotten the experience, and I would like the opportunity to continue to do that for another three years.
In my career, one of my responsibilities is managing a multimillion-dollar budget. It's been, and it's been in a range of ways. As a product manager, I was responsible for the revenue, and I was responsible for the expense. If revenue was dropping faster than expenses, then I had to make cuts, and I had to figure out ways to raise that revenue. So I have that background. I have to do it now. I have, I have to, a budget that I have to manage that has to be results-oriented. When I spend money, I have to show what's the revenue coming back from that money. So I do have that experience.
Starting with place one. While the district's enrollment has seen a decline, the $737.5 million bond referendum approved by voters in 2017 still has more than $500 million of authorization left to issue. How would you address a declining enrollment with increased outstanding indebtedness?
This is, this is a huge problem. And it doesn't have an easy answer. I have met with several times with Mr. Ball, or a few times at least, and he has explained to me how we pay bonds, and how we, and how, and how the deficit is different. But I think where I would put my energies in is to addressing the decreased enrollment. And, because there's no reason for our enrollment to be decreasing in this environment. So that's where I would put my efforts.
School districts have two separate buckets of money. And so those are actually two different answers. Our, what the voters approved in 2017 go for our buildings, and specifically for the technology devices. That is something that we're going to follow through with on, because our community voted for that. Those include, the district has 69 billion, 69 buildings that are worth billions. We have to maintain those facilities. We have to provide upkeep for that. So our bond package is something that the voters approved. The, for our maintenance and operation, that's where we get the ADA, where our students, we get money for students that are in the classroom. That's the money that comes for our teacher Sally, administration, for busing. And so you need to understand that those are two separate pieces, and we cannot mix the two.
Well done.
I'll just go. Like Ms. Timish was saying, it is two buckets of money. The money that the bond package paid for is the MNO, the maintenance and operation of the district, the day-to-day expenses, whether that's the maintenance of a campus or the paying of teachers. How would you address declining enrollment? While I do agree, we need to address the declining enrollment of students now rather than later, so that we won't get into any bigger trouble down the road. Thank you.
First of all, Julie, I just want to say thank you for putting these questions on PowerPoint. I mean, because normally we're scribbling. Okay. So, so again, I'm on the, like I said, I'm on the community bond committee, so we're kind of getting an update on how all of this is rolled out. One of the things that I think might put voters at ease is that when we do, when they spend money on technology, that money, those bonds are paid off a whole lot quicker than the money that is pulled out for buildings and such. So that's one thing that might ease your mind about the bonds. And also, my understanding is that we pay off our debt in about 20 years. And apparently, that's compared to other districts, that's kind of unheard of. We're more of, do like 30 years. Declining enrollment, yeah, again, that's kind of a separate question. So I have the yellow card, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay. So, the declining enrollment is, I feel like the board, our school district is addressing that for the fall. I feel like what I've heard, the marketing program that they're going to implement, you will begin to see LISD out in our community more than you see it today. So I think they are addressing the declining enrollment. And the indebtedness related to the bond issue, I think it just empowers the board to continue to make good, sound decisions. It helps them to be mindful of being good stewards of that bond money, making sure that the vendors and the people that they select are, are the right one for the money that they're selecting. Thank you.
Starting with place two. What would you like LISD taxpayers to understand about recapture, commonly known as Robin Hood?
Allison starts.
Ms. LaSalle?
Okay. So, without saying any bad words, I would say that it's, it stinks. It's not, it's not good. So it's a very flawed, flawed finance system. It was one that was made, you know, I believe, back in the 70s or 80s. I'm not going to quote the year, because I don't exactly know. But it was made so long ago, it's just really not relevant to how we are now. The other big thing about it, that most people who have asked questions of me about this don't know this, but, so we think, oh, we're going to pay our $30 million, and it's going to go help some poor school, you know, out in West Texas. That's not what happens with that money. It goes into the general fund, and it could be spent on anything. And so that alone is a huge problem.
Okay. So, why do I start? I think, I probably don't have anything to add from what Allison said, but I will say, in the discussions I've heard, Dr. Rogers, he lovingly refers to this as Robin, more than just Robin Hood, because it sure feels like we're being robbed from. It was intended, I know, for the right purpose. It was. But I don't think that it's doing what it's supposed to be doing now. And that's just to say, get out and vote at a state level with our legislative system, the education system in our state, because they're the ones that are using the money and not putting it back into education. So if you want to do something about that, please get involved in the state education.
Just to reiterate what Ms. Allison said, it is a flawed law. Maybe it started because of good intentions. The intention was property-rich districts would give the money to the state, and the state would then in turn give it to property-poor districts, who would maybe need the extra hand. But it doesn't do that. The property-rich districts must give that money to the state, which then goes to the general fund, which means that the state can use and allocate the money as it sees fit, instead of going to education. It may go to transportation or agricultural. And that's something that needs to be fixed, and something that is hurting public education in Texas today. Thank you.
I agree with the statements. I've actually written about this. I would like for our taxpayers to know that we will no longer use the word Robin Hood, because when we think of the word Robin Hood, we think we're doing something good. And for the almost 5.4 million students in the state of Texas, I think that those districts that are property-rich would be willing to give money to urban districts, rural districts that need it. We would be willing to fund it, because the people in Texas are generous, and we want what's best for our students. But that's not what's happening. The money, and I believe it's almost $4 billion, goes to our state general fund. No, no, there's a line item for the money, the recapture money that they receive, and that money has no And that money has no trail that follows it. It does not go to other public schools. And so that's an item that the legislators get to use for whatever they want to use, but it's not going to our public schools. So I would like for us to stop using the word Robin Hood because we're not providing for those in need. Thank you.
The history of Robin Hood is that a poorer school district sued the state because we have in our state constitution that everyone gets a good public education. And the school system down the street had books, everything. They didn't even have books. The outcome, they had to sue twice. The second time, the state found for them and they ordered the, they ordered the state to bring, you know, to do, to operate in this. And what the state did, they didn't have time, so they put in fact, okay, really rich school districts, we'll take money from them to fund the poorer ones. And it wasn't meant to go as big and as wide-ranging as it is. And in the press dubbed it Robin Hood. It has gotten out of control. You look at someplace like Houston or Austin, Austin is sending more money to recapture than they spend on their own school districts. That's money that's leaving our community. Even if we tried to raise taxes, it would just go to our community. This is a problem for, this is not just a school problem, it's a community problem. So I think it's solved through advocacy, even with, and with, and in terms of property tax reform, because the two are related. And vote. Look for pro-education candidates, vote for them. Thank you.
This next question starts with place one. It occurs to us that Ms. Weinstein has to keep going back to back, so if you guys would like to switch it up, that would be, to make it more fair.
What? I went first. Yeah, she went first last time, this time.
Right, yeah, but it occurs to us that you have to keep going back to back. Like you just sit down and you have to start a new answer again?
Oh, you want me to sit down?
Well, no, I'm just saying if you guys...
If we get started this time, that way, it will get us back on track where it's not back to back, if you're okay with that.
Whatever you two think is fair. Do you feel that LISD is on the right track with the One to X program? Are there any changes that you would like to see?
I do feel like that we are on the right track with One to X. My kids were in it, the school district, when this was rolled out five years ago. And I do feel like what the district has done this year is we've worked really hard with our teachers. If you were in the district back then, I think we gave the teachers an iPads for some at the same time that their students received an iPad. And so we, we've learned a lot and I feel like the district is really working hard to make sure that we've got the teachers who are using technology that they want to use. And we know for most of the teachers in the classroom, that's going to include an iPad and a computer for the things that they need to do in their classroom. And so we're making sure we have that. We also, again, we had a community study group at the elementary, middle, and high school levels where we had students and teachers and parents that studied each piece of technology because elementary students use it differently than middle school students versus high school students. And I feel like the district really did a great job of making sure that we're on that leading edge when it comes to technology with our students.
Well, I think the One to X program is, it's phenomenal. I've never seen anything like this. And I have to tell you, when these kids go to work at some of these big companies, they might be in for a little bit of a downer. But it's great that they're learning to use this technology and that, and that they can use it in their everyday lives. I think my concern's become one when you can't have everything on the iPad. I have a daughter, she brings home the iPad, she's like on it all the time and only part of it is schoolwork. So I think as long as it's, it needs to be tied, you know, the teachers need to be using it not to be the total sum of the lesson, but to actually enhance the learning. And she has gotten some benefit from that. The other part of it is that students who go home and don't have a Wi-Fi connection, I think we need to do some partnerships with, we have to, we need to find a way. If you're going to have an iPad and it doesn't have internet access, which makes sense, then we need to partner up with, with somebody to bring Microcells in or with a Starbucks so that people that go home and don't have Wi-Fi have someplace that they can go use this device and use it for their homework and get the maximum value. Thank you.
I personally believe that the One to X program is doing a fairly great job in doing what it's meant to do. However, I would like to see more student involvement, which was echoed. I share the same perspective as a couple of board members, as they stated in a couple meetings a few months back. As one problem with the One to X program is that the iPads, many students, especially in the high school level, use it mainly for games or watching videos instead of actually schoolwork. I would like to see a more direct and more curriculum on how the iPad and technology will actually be used.
So I believe that they are on the right track with this now. So my son has had his, he's in seventh grade, so he's had it for about four years. He honestly didn't use it much in elementary school. Now that he's in middle school, they use it a lot. I mean, textbooks are on it and all that kind of stuff. So I definitely think it's good. And I know when things were rolled out, you know, the Wi-Fi network wasn't ready, there was a lot of things that weren't ready. But I also want to give some kind of kudos to the IT department, just watching what they have done over the last, I believe it's a year and a half. They have been getting ready to roll out this new set of iPads. I mean, they had all kinds of people, I mean, a year and a half, they have been evaluating this. So I think they're ready. I think it's going to be good. There were students and teachers all over the district that had input on which device. And, you know, the board members got finders this thick to, you know, look through. So I think they are on the right track now.
I do feel that LISD is on the right track with the One to X program. I think the technology, I think that there are always things you can improve. It is concerning to me that the fourth and fifth graders have it mainly because they do so many things other than the schoolwork. So I think at a younger age, more controls need to be put in place so that they can do the schoolwork, not necessarily the games and the other things. And I think that holds true for middle school and high school too. I think it's great that we're putting this kind of technology in the hands of our students, but I think it needs to be just for their schoolwork, research and schoolwork.
Place two. What are your legislative priorities as an advocate for our district? I think it's actually Denise's turn. We skipped you.
Why do I keep getting the hard questions? Ah, okay. My legislative priorities are... Again, not to just fall back that the, the board is a team, but I think, again, to be good stewards of the money, to be good stewards of the students, to be good stewards of what the community has entrusted us with. So I don't have any legislative priority other than to continue to make good decisions that help our school district thrive and be the best it can be.
For me, my main legislative priority would be if I'd be elected to the school board of trustees, would be school finance. The current formula that the legislator uses to do school finance hasn't been changed or looked at since, I believe, 1984. Schools 10 years ago were different than 1984 and they're way different now in 2018. So that's something that I would go down to Austin, whether that be with the board or just by myself or with community members, to go knock on my senators and House representative's doors and tell them what I think about that and that I want them to look at it. Look at it, not in 10 years, but look at it now so they can stop hurting public education and public education can do what it's meant to do, educate our future. Thank you.
So, what I would like to do if I was, if I was elected, I would actually really like to talk to our state Senator Jane Nelson. Because she was once a teacher, she talks about that. She is the head of the Senate Finance Committee, I do believe. She's a gal that could really make some changes. And honestly, I hope this doesn't bite me later, but I've been a little disappointed in her lack of advocacy for us. And so I think that that's what I would do. You know, it might be sitting outside her hallway, from what I hear, till she comes out, but that's what I hear. But, you know, to me, you know, we need to bring her back, you know, to her roots and say, hey, come on, help us out here. So that's where I would go.
Well, the major issue for advocacy is school finance reform, for all the reasons previously mentioned. And I don't think, I, I guess I'm going to burn a bridge, but I don't, I don't think Jane Nelson can, I don't think that she can represent us because she's part of the problem. She's in charge of the Finance Committee or the whole of financial thing. She's the most powerful person down in Austin. We used to get funding out of the franchise tax and she's cut that and she's even proposed to get rid of it altogether. It, it just feels to me like Texas in general wants to move towards privatization of education and away from, and away from funding public education, which is a real shame because we really depend upon public education. Now, that's not to say they're all like that. I mean, Joe Strauss and Dan Huberty were awesome and amazing. So we need more legislators like that in there that we can work with.
The school district is actually going to begin working on our legislative priorities as a board this summer because we know the 86th session, planning for the 86th session has already begun. I have already made several trips down to Austin to listen to the, be involved in the Senate Ed hearings because we need to be a part of the process. And I have been for the last three years, making multiple trips down to Austin to meet with our state legislators and our senators. I'm also involved with our elected officials when they're back home because this needs to be a continuous conversation. They need to understand about public schools and we need to be informing them. We need to be advocating for them. For me personally, it's also making sure that each one of our community members understand the importance of a vote and what we're doing because there's an impact in our community to have a voice when you go to the poll each and every time. And so for me, that's been one of the things that I have really been a strong proponent of, is making sure that our community members, I'm not telling you who to vote for, but that you are voting each and every time.
Starting with place one. Imagine a state school finance formula that provides a straight 50/50 funding split between state and locals. How would this affect our schools and community?
I think it would have a very, very positive impact. Right now, we only get 14% of our budget from the state, or funding from the state. And, and now we're, you know, we're going through recapture and the amount that we're getting from the state is likely to dwindle. So I think 50/50 would be a big injection of cash that would be very, very beneficial. And it'd be beneficial to our community because 70% of our property taxes go to the schools. So if they're funding 50/50, that helps our property taxes. It all kind of rolls together.
I like the question. I just, because it's not practical, I don't think that's anything that's going to happen. I just, I don't think I'm really going to answer it because I just, I've been down in Austin enough, that's just not going to happen. And I think there's a million different ways that that can be divided. We can hope as much as we want with that between the cities and states that we would split that, but I just don't think there's any, any crystal ball that I have that I could even provide an answer. But yes, if we got more funding for our cities and our communities, yes, it would make a difference. Do I think it would ever be split at 50/50? No.
I agree with, with Ms. Weinstein that if it was 50/50, I'm pretty sure all the community members would be happy, joyous, speechless. Not much I can say about that. But I also agree with Ms. Timish. We have to be realistic here. That may never happen in my lifetime, may not happen ever. And that's something we have to take into account again. Thank you.
Yeah, so in a word, it would be awesome, you know, if that happened. But I, again, I don't think that's going to happen. But I do think that we need to start talking about some real innovative ways of, of funding our schools better than we do now. And I know that there's a lot of people out there with some great ideas that I think that we should probably start listening to.
I agree with the others. I think this idea of a, of a split like that, it'd be absolutely amazing. It kind of makes me want to dream. And I know that sounds crazy, but I mean, what if, right? What if, what if we could have state-of-the-art swimming pools, tennis courts, bands, all the things that our students love? What if we could have all those programs in every one of our schools and every one of our schools in our district available to everybody? So, impossible, yes, but one can dream.
Place two. Public education is facing increasing competition from charter schools. What steps would you like to see LISD take to address this?
Let me? Okay. Well, let me go. One major thing is, I can tell you firsthand that Louisville Independent School District schools are phenomenal. They offer AP classes, Avid classes, pre-AP classes. They also have, like I said, the firefighting classes, the culinary classes, whatever you want, LISD probably has it, or it will have it. You just have to tell someone. But the only, the thing that I think is missing is the communication to the public that we have these programs. I didn't even know we had a STEM program until I started running for school board and I became more aware of what was happening in the district. So maybe someone in the East Zone doesn't necessarily know what's offered in the West Zone. This is why we need to get better communication with the community, whether that be social media, sending out mailers, or any other way of better communicating to the parents, to the community, what LISD can offer. Because firsthand, I can tell you, it can offer a lot.
Okay. So charter schools definitely are, we're getting a lot of competition from those. And not only that, but we could go on and on about how they're not a great alternative, in my opinion. So as far as how we should address this, one of the things that I know has been at least started to some extent is kind of an exit interview. So when people leave, when kids and parents leave our schools, why are they leaving? Where are they going? In addition to that, I would love it if we could somehow or another reach out to the community, because I think we all probably know a handful of people that have their kids in charter schools. Okay, why did you go to a charter school? What made you leave? You know, I realize that we're not going to be the best fit for everyone and that's fine, but at least, you know, it's like a business. Why did you leave? Let's find out the why and try to address those whys so that we can make ourselves better. And again, I totally agree with the marketing thing and I know the district is working on that and that's another great thing as well.
I would like to see LISD continue the communication and maybe do a better job with communicating with the public a little bit more of the programs that LISD offers. Because I definitely, I, since I've started on this journey here, LISD offers everything. There isn't any reason for the children in our community to be transferring to or moving out of our district to a charter school. We have above and beyond the education. So I, I do think communication, getting that message out there is really important. I also, I also think that, and this is foreign, but when new people move into our area, when, when new children are into the preschool system, we can talk to those parents. And I think that we can, from the very beginning, start talking to them about their school that they're going to select. I think that's important too.
I also think the conversation needs to have with how charter schools are funded differently than public schools and the accountability that are different for public schools compared to charter schools. Public schools in the school district, we're here, we're running for school board, we're elected by our community members. Charter schools do not have oversight of a school board. There's a lot of legislation that goes into, and we provide for transparency and oversight with our budgets and the decisions that we make that are open to the public. Charter schools do not have the same type of accountability. Charter schools receive facility funding. What's happening when these charter schools open, get facilities funding from the state and in three years, they're gone? Who owns that land? Who owns that property? Where does that money trail go? I think these are discussions that we need to have when the state wants to give more money to charter schools. We need to have equity when we're comparing public schools to what's going on with the accountability or lack of accountability in charter schools.
So of course, I guess I've talked about this several times, of course, across the course of the day. And I would like to see the marketing plan because marketing has changed. We don't need an old-fashioned marketing plan where we send out flyers. We need a strategic marketing plan that meets the parent where they are. We don't need to go out and interview them. They don't have the, they probably don't have the information. They may not even want to interview with us. That's the problem with exit interviews is, hey, I'm leaving, I don't have time, bye. But I don't know if they're exiting. I don't think they're coming in. I think that's the problem. It's before they even hit kindergarten that they're roped in. Like I said, these charter schools, they're out at a community events, they're on the cover of my Living magazine when I get that. I don't see Louisville ISD there. But Louisville ISD can get that message out without having to attack charter schools. They can get it out with, hey, did you know our nurses, not only do we... Not only do we have nurses on campus, but they can actually do things like change or give an injection, which charter schools don't even... If you ask those questions to a charter school, they'll say, well, they have a nurse, but it probably circulates. Social media, Facebook, lots of ways to...blogging. There's lots of things that we can do to meet the customer where they are. Thank you.
Recent tragic events have resulted in calls nationally and locally to armed teachers. What is your opinion of this idea? Do you have other suggestions to improve safety? Place One, please.
I think...is it...yeah.
You know what? LISD is very concerned. The safety of our students is our number-one priority. Last month, our district, along with our neighbors and the FBI, had conversations about what can we do? What can we be improving? We've also had continuous conversations with the police chiefs in all the cities that represent LISD because they're the experts. They're the ones that understand the safety and security of our students and our communities and teachers. And their response to us is, they do not think that arming our teachers is what's best for LISD. And I completely respect... They're the ones that understand what's best for our students. And I'm going to, if they tell us that we should not be arming our teachers, I'm going to go with what they say because they're absolutely the experts. They're the ones with the background and the training and the expertise. We've continued to include in our bond package hardening of all of the entrances. And so, technology upgrades so that we know what's going on that's related with our police. When they pull up to campuses, they know what's inside, and they know what's going on. So, we are continuing to monitor technology, other things to make sure that our students are safe each and every time they come to our schools.
Oh. I feel like I've already answered the question, I guess. I agree with everything that Ms. Timmish said, and I have nothing to add to that piece of it except that I do think the next thing that we need to focus on is the children ourselves. We have an epidemic of anxiety, of depression, of self-harm. And loneliness starts as early as like second grade. That teacher can see that kid that doesn't have anyone to eat lunch with, that never gets picked for teams. And they can start...they can start working to create that culture of inclusion. Of course, you know, and with a program like Just Say Hello, which is a Sandy Hook program. And of course, this doesn't go away. As you get into high school, you have kids that are highly at risk. And they might talk to a teacher or counselor. The teacher or counselor, I don't know exactly where it goes, but I don't know that we can hold them accountable. We know we want them to listen. We can't hold them accountable for that. But what if we put in place a mental health coordinator to whom those children could be referred that could then engage the parents? This is for any age. Engage the parents and get them in touch with resources and talk about how we're going to support that child to the school system so everyone has a happy, healthy education.
So, my opinion of the idea of arming teachers is pretty illogical. I think most teachers that I've talked to about this, they don't want to do that. I mean, they've already got enough on their plates to worry about something like that. However, I think one of the solutions to all of this may be just community discussion. You know, if I was elected, I would listen to just about every idea because they can be ferreted out whether or not they're going to work for our district. What might work for us may not work for our ISD, who does have armed teachers. As far as other ideas, one of the things that concerns me the most is the kids themselves. So, kids are awesome, don't get me wrong. But they could easily bring in something in their backpacks. So, we have got to, I think, create a culture of, you know, if you see something, say something. And really, you know, put that in the kids' heads and get with them, and that's where the answer is.
My opinion won't vary much from the rest of the candidates. I do not agree that we should arm our teachers. And I believe that that puts the emphasis as the problem being guns, and that's not the problem. It's a heart problem. I do think our school district is doing an amazing job of ramping up the security. So, I know they're getting ready to remodel a few of the entrances. So, they're putting in bulletproof glass. They're changing the way you can get in and out of our...into our schools. I think that, just to further support that, when the thirteen municipalities that support LISD, when they, the police officers, the police chiefs, say it is a bad idea for you to arm your teachers, I respect that, and I honor that decision.
Everyone on this panel had great ideas on this subject, but I just wanted to thank LISD for holding the safetiness of our students and teachers to the utmost highest. I personally do not believe arming teachers is the right choice for LISD. As Ms. Allison said, we are not argyle. It may not work for us. But I also believe it should be a discussion we should have. But it should not only be about arming teachers. That's not the only option we have. It could be also implementing a clear backpack policy, adding metal detectors, maybe increasing our SROs. But that's also a financial issue. We have to keep that in mind. And that's where the communication would come in, with our police chiefs. Quite recently, like Ms. Timmish said, the current board and Dr. Rogers met with the police chiefs from all over the district, and they are the experts on this field. I'm not the expert here. They're the ones who said we should not arm teachers. And I'm not going to go against them since they know what they're talking about.
Looks like I'm going to run out of time before I run out of questions. So, I'm going to squeeze one more in, and then we'll go to closing statements. What do you feel that you still need to learn to be an effective or more effective trustee? Ms. Reiman Schneider, please.
There is not enough time tonight for me to answer that question. I feel that...I mean, this is a new thing for me the last couple of months. I think for me to be a more effective trustee, it will be understanding all of our schools, elementary, middle, and high school, and really seeing what goes into running them. So, for me, it's just understanding more about our schools.
So, for me, this journey began back probably in September 2015. I started the Inside LISD program. And then, I ran for trustee in 2016. I did not win, but, you know, it kind of ignited my passion. So, ever since then, I have been almost third Monday night of the month, you know, in this room, learning, going to workshops, sitting on committees, talking to different principals, different teachers, really all over the district. So, but I also want to concede that, heck, yeah, I need to learn more. There's a lot more to learn about just being a trustee and what all that entails. I, you know, I think you never stop learning, always. You never stop learning. I know at the last board meeting, Ms. Cox read off all the hours that all the trustees had put in over the past year, I believe. And each one of them had put in, you know, somewhere between fifty and eighty hours. So, there's a lot left to learn.
The way I look at this is just like a high school scenario. First, you have elementary, then middle, then high school, and now college. And then, after that, you're undergraduates and so on. For a trustee, no matter how many hours you put in and how much you may believe you know, I believe you never stop learning, whether that's the teacher's names, how policy works, the...how you communicate with the community. So, I have a lot to learn, but I'm willing to put in the time, the effort, to learn everything that I can learn in the time that I have.
Well, yes, when you're not in that job and you have...there is so much to learn. And I look forward to that. One of the biggest things that I really... that I felt like I was so weak on last year that I worked on this year is finance. And I want to thank Mr. Ball for meeting with me and explaining patiently how our finances work. That was helpful. But, yeah, I can't even begin to say what I need to learn to be more effective. I just...I know that there is always continuous growth, even in the job I have now. There are things I need to learn to be more effective.
For me, as a trustee, one of the things that I love to do is ask questions and get a better understanding because I do not think that you can work in public schools and know everything even in twenty or thirty years. It's so big. But one of the things that I've learned even through this campaign is some of the questions that have come up is recapture, marketing, declining enrollment. One of the things that I wanted to ask was, well, how do we avoid recapture? Because people are talking about marketing. Did you know that even if LISD marketed and worked hard to get five thousand more students into our schools by August of 2018, we'd still be a recapture? Did you know that we'd still owe money even if we had five thousand more students come in? That's two 6A public high schools that even if we got that many students into our doors by August of next year, would still owe money? So, those are the things that we need to understand and our community needs to understand. I want to continue to grow, to be...to listen well to our community members, to our teachers and our students. And as a lifelong learner, I don't plan to stop. Thank you.
We started opening statements with Place One, so we'll start closing statements with Place Two.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to make sure I thank everyone here today. Thank you for coming out and being an informed voter, whether you vote for me or my opponents. You, by being here, are an informed voter, and you're carrying on the American dream, the American way of diplomacy. Now, my name is David Hernandez, and I'm running for the Louisville Independent School Board Trustee, Place Two. The reason I am running is because I believe I have a heart of service and for good. I have been able to say I represent four thousand five hundred students now, but I want to be able to say I represent more than that, more than just my friends, more than just my own interests, my own petty little gain or selfish gain. I want to be able to say I am more than just one person, more than one city, more than one region. I want to be able to say I am the advocate for public education. I want to be able to say I represent you, and I am representing you faithfully and truthfully. Thank you. Again, my name is David Hernandez, and I'm running for the Louisville Independent School District, Place Two. Thank you.
And thank you all for coming out tonight. I really appreciate it. We all do. It's so nice to get these great questions. Julie, thank you. Anyway, so again, my name is Allison LaSalle. I'm running for Place Two. I would just so appreciate your vote. If you didn't hear an answer that you liked, if you have more questions, I would be more than happy to meet with, talk with, any of you to follow up or get more ideas. If I'm elected, I plan to do the same thing. I'm here for anyone here who wants to ask a question, who wants to know more, who wants to have input. There will be a lot of future opportunities for people to serve on committees. So, I welcome all of that. So, thank you again for coming out tonight. My name is Allison LaSalle, and I'm running for Place Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Lauren, our timekeeper. Wonderful. This forum is an example of the great community that we live in. You care about the candidates, and I care about your children. I wish I could stand up here and articulate wonderful solutions facing our school district, but this is all very new to me. The important thing you should know is that my faith is the source of strength and wisdom, and I will draw upon my faith to work with leadership and make sound decisions. So, while I may not be as familiar with the various programs, I believe my faith is what equips me to serve in a way that ensures the Board of Trustees provides an educational climate in which excellence can thrive. I hope to bring my strong family values to the board as an asset to an already great team. I will be a diligent advocate for all parents and caregivers. I am determined to be a board member that represents each student equally. I am Denise Reiman Schneider, and I am running for Place Two on the LISD Board of Trustees. I hope I've earned your vote today.
My name is Sandra Weinstein, running for Place One. I think one of the things that makes me uniquely qualified is the fact that I do bring a huge diversity of experience. I didn't go to one school in one school district. I went to multiple schools, and I've been in multiple schools. And my kids went to multiple schools in multiple school districts. So, when I moved to Texas, I did research because I did not want to go through the things that I had to go through in other school districts. And I did research. I came out here, interviewed people. They were great. And I picked LISD because it was the best place for my family. And I'm so committed to it, and I'm so committed to its success and not seeing it have to degrade. I bring with me also business acumen, experiences that...experiences in how to talk to parents and...or, you know, in my case, customers, parents, customers, and how to tell that story of the Louisville ISD and why this is the place, this is the destination for your child to go to school and why this is the best experience that they can have. My name is...I just want to say I'm a public school... I'm a product of a public school. I...it prepared me for a successful career. It prepared me to raise my family. And I think everybody deserves a great public school education so that they can be equally prepared. And I think LISD does that. My name is Sandra Weinstein. I'm running for Place One, and I would be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
I would also like to just thank the sentiments that have been expressed to the PTA for putting this on. I appreciate that. And thank you for each and every one of you for coming out to vote. You may not realize in local elections, often when you vote, you're representing forty to fifty of your neighbors. So, your vote counts. It's important. I'd also like to thank all of the candidates. I appreciate the time that we've gotten to know each other. And so, thank you. I'm running for reelection because I want to continue to see LISD be the best that it can be for all of our almost fifty-three thousand students. And I believe that my experience, having lived in this district, having worked in this district, and our family place in this district, I understand all thirteen different communities. I'm involved in all thirteen of our communities. Each is unique. Each has its own culture, its own bent. And we need to understand that because we have decisions that are going to impact all of those communities. And because they're unique, we need to have somebody that has experience, that has knowledge, has those relationships with those community leaders so that when something's going on, they have a contact for that. And I have that, and I want to continue to do that. My promise three years ago was that I would roll up my sleeves and work hard as a servant leader and an advocate